Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the November 28th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order at 7:01 PM. I'm gonna start with some introductory remarks. Hello and welcome. I'm Chair Adam Miller, and I'll be presiding over this meeting. As we begin, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items for remote participation. A public comment will be solicited during each actionable agenda item. Once I ask for public comment on an item, please click Raise Hand in the Go-to Webinar in order to make a public comment. Before being individually identified, all members of the public will be muted. Village staff will announce the speaker by stating their name and unmute their audio to allow up to three minutes of public comment. When called, please state your name and address for the record and proceed with your comments, speaking clearly during allotted time. Do not use the chat or question function and go to webinar, as these functions will not be monitored during the meeting, and please limit background noise to the extent possible. And as a reminder, this meeting can be viewed live on Comcast Local Channel 18 or streamed at royalpalmbeach.com/youtube. Okay, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. It's gonna be led by Commissioner Williams. Please rise. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sarah, can you do the roll call, please?
Yes, we have Chairman Adam Miller.
Here.
David Leland.
Here.
Commissioner Lauren McClellan.
Here.
Commissioner Cara Derry.
Here.
Commissioner Kamar Williams.
Here. We're gonna switch over, throw it over to Midi Commissioners, just for a little change-up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could request, given the items on the agenda tonight, if I could request moving item five, which is the election item, up to after the approval of the minutes, that would be great if the commission is amenable to that modification to the agenda.
I think we need a motion to...
If you have consensus, that's fine. You also formally approve the agenda, so that's fine.
Fair enough. Okay, great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
A motion made by Commissioner Leland. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Minutes pass, five to zero. So now, we're gonna move on to item five, which is the vote. The new vice chairman. Throw it over you, Midi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a reminder, this is being done because of the passing of Philip Marquis. He was your vice chair, so there's now a vacancy on that seat. The village code says that there's a vacancy in that seat. It should be filled quickly, so that's why it's on the agenda tonight. As I tell you at every meeting, typically the reorganization meeting, your action tonight can be either by nomination or by motion. It's easier to do by motion, but if you do it by motion, it's the normal way. You approve all of your action items. Somebody makes a motion. If there's a second, that's moved to a vote. If it's done by nomination, if somebody nominates somebody for the vice chair seat, take any other nominations on the floor at that time, and then you vote on them in order that they are made. So nomination one for person A would be voted on first. Proceed accordingly if you have more than that. But with that, I'll answer any questions you have, but you need to fill the vice chair seat tonight, so I will leave that to you.
Commissioners, we have any questions before we begin? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lauren McClellan.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Leland and Commissioner Derry for Commissioner McClellan to be the vice chair, as she gives me a look of death. What I said, Leland was first, right? And then Derry. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I guess motion passes five to zero. And congratulations to Commissioner McClellan, now vice chair. Okay, so now, we're actually gonna get to the agenda. So I actually have to get out of, for this first agenda item, so I'm gonna turn it, the, turn it over to Commissioner McClellan. Yes.
Okay, so I have to read the whole title, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so the next item, the first item up is the application number 23-090AAR RPV High School Marquis. The applicant, the school district of Palm Beach County, is requesting architecture approval to install a school board informational sign at Royal Palm Beach High School for a property located at 10600 Okochobee Boulevard.
Thank you, Acting Vice Chair. If I could just make one comment for the record, let the record reflect that Chairman Miller has left the dais at 7:06. He does have a voting conflict on this item. The applicant is his employer, so he is not to participate in or vote on this item. He has left the council chambers, so you can proceed with the item. Is the applicant present? Okay. If you could come to the podium, sir, and I'll swear you in. And I guess, I think you're coming over here. Could you give the commission your name for the record, sir?
Oh, yes, for the record, Michael Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Could you raise your right hand, and I'll swear and staff at the same time. Do you all swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you both, and I'll turn back to the commission and ask for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening. Josu Ledger for the record. The application, for his application number 23-090AAR, the applicant's request architectural approval to install a school board informational sign at Royal Palm Beach High School located at 10600 Okochobee Boulevard. The proposed sign is highlighted in red. I'm not sure if you guys can see the presentation.
No.
Second, let me find out what's going on.
It just came back, Josu.
Thank you so much. Application number 23-090AAR, the applicant is requesting approval to install a school board informational sign at Royal Palm Beach High School located at 10600 Okochobee Boulevard. The proposed sign is highlighted in red at the entrance of the school. This slide illustrates the proposed marquee sign. Staff is recommending approval of application number 23-090AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation for this application. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer. If not, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Owens, did you want to make a presentation? Does the board have any other questions of the applicant?
No.
Do you have any public comment?
And Madam Vice Chair, if we could call for public comment, I'm not sure if we have any members of the public, and maybe just applicants in the room, but if we could call for public comment, both in the room and also on the computer. Thank you.
So is there any public comment here today?
Thank you, ma'am.
Public comment? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application number 23-090AAR.
I'll second that.
And Madam Vice Chair, before you call for the vote on this one, I just wanna remind the commission, this is, you may recall, there was a code change that came before you as a local planning agency. This one actually moves on to the council as well. This gets approval by you as a recommending body tonight. Final approval is at council, so your, your approval tonight is a motion to recommend approval. So if the maker of the motion is, is amenable to a modification, to just state that you're a recommending body in the secondor of the motion, that, that would be how to proceed tonight. So you're just recommending approval, you're not actually approving. Are you okay with that modification to your motion?
Yes.
Is the secondor of the motion also okay? Thank you, sir.
Very seconded by Commissioner Leland. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. So we can go get council... Adam. Go get Adam. Go get Mr. Miller.
Gotta get a bullhorn or something to get him back. He went way out there.
Playing cold weather. Number, the second item is application number 23-123AAR Goldfish Swim School Sign. The applicant, Egan Sign, on behalf of JBL Village Shops LLC, is requesting architecture approval to install a storefront wall sign for a property located at 10109 Southern Boulevard.
And as he's taking his seat, we'll let the record reflect that. Commissioner, excuse me, Chairman Miller is back at 7:11 on the dais.
Thank you, Midi. Okay, now, we're gonna pass it over to you.
Thank you. Is the applicant present for item two? Okay, any applicants online, Sarah? Nobody left. So the commission can proceed. This is just an AAR, so I'm not sure if they notified the village, but you can proceed with the item. And I guess, before you do, let me ask for any ex parte disclosures on this item from the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Midi. Josu, over to you, sir.
Thank you. Application number 23-123AAR, the applicant is requesting architectural approval for a wall sign situated within the Village Shops on 441 for a property located at 10323 Southern Boulevard. This slide illustrates the existing facade and the proposed sign. Staff is recommending approval of application number 23-123AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I know the applicant's not here, otherwise I'd offer them a chance to ask questions or do a presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments? Commissioner Williams?
No comments.
Vice Chair, Commissioner McClellan? No? Commissioner Leland? Commissioner Derry? No? Okay, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Sarah, do we have anyone online? Yet? Oh, okay. Would you like to do a presentation? Yeah, okay, okay. I guess I'm gonna close the floor to public comment, and is there a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve item number 23-123AAR.
A motion made by Commissioner Williams, so I have a second. Seconded by Vice Chair McClellan. Do, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, Ms. McPherson. Okay, onto applicant number, item number three, application number 23-124AAR Discount Tire Sign. The applicant, Farron Signs, on behalf of Hale Properties LLC, is requesting architectural approval to update the wall and monument signage on the property to accommodate the new Discount Tire branding image and replace all address characters for a property located at 119 South State Road 7. Midi, I'll pass over to you.
Thank you, sir. Is the applicant present for this item? Thank you. Could you come to the podium? And state your name for the record? Thank you. Could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the commission and ask for any ex parte disclosures?
No.
Thank you.
Ma'am, what was your last name? Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Josu, it's over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number 23-124, the applicant is requesting architectural approval to update the wall and monument signage for a property located at 119 South State Road 7. This slide illustrates the existing and proposed east elevation. This slide illustrates the existing and proposed west elevation. This slide illustrates the existing and proposed monument sign for the property. Staff is recommending approval of application number 23-129AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hanan, do you have a presentation? You'd like to say anything? Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Derry?
Nope.
Commissioner Leland?
No.
I, I think the sign looks, you know, a nice update to this, to the sign. Commissioner McClellan? Commissioner Williams? Okay, do we have, oh, sorry, I almost jumped ahead. I'd like to open the floor to public comment on this item. Anyone online? Thank you, Sarah. Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion on this item?
Approval application number 23-124.
Sorry, okay. The motion made by Commissioner McClellan. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Leland. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Hanan. Okay, app, item number four, application number 23-140AAR Pizza Hut Sign Update. The applicant, Kenny Webb, on behalf of South Pacific Enterprises Limited, is requesting architectural aesthetic approval to update the signage for Pizza Hut to reflect the trademark of the commercial business for a property located at 11851 Southern Boulevard, Suite B. Midi?
Thank you, sir. Is the applicant present for this item? Thank you, sir. Could you come to the podium and state your name, and I'll swear you in?
JC.
What's your last name, sir?
Abiosa.
Okay, thank you, sir. Can you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you. I'll turn back to the commission and ask for any ex parte disclosures.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Midi. Josu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number 23-140AAR, the applicant is requesting architectural approval for a wall sign for a property located at 11851 Southern Boulevard, Suite B. The proposed sign is for the existing Pizza Hut. This slide illustrates the existing and proposed wall sign for the Pizza Hut. And this sign illustrates the, the existing proposed nameplate on the monument sign for the, the Pizza Hut. Staff is recommending approval of application number 23-140AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Josu. Sir, do you have a presentation? Like to say anything? Thank you, sir. Okay, commissioners, any questions? Nope.
Nope.
Okay, I'd like to open the floor to public comment on this item. Anyone online? No. I'll, I'll keep asking. I'd like to close the floor to public comment, and do we have a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve application number 23-140.
A motion made by Commissioner Derry. Do I have a second? Seconded by Comis, Vice Chair McClellan, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, sir. Thank you. You too. Enjoy the, enjoy the nice night. Nice and cold out there. Okay, next item, number five, application number 23-134AAR Tenant Position Sign. The applicant, Signorama, on behalf of RPB PC is requesting architectural approval to install new wall signage for property located at 11551 Southern Boulevard. Midi, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is the applicant present for this item? Anybody online? Can, can they hear us? Do you know, do you know who it is? Susan, can you hear us online? Can, can you say something, Susan, so we can make sure we can hear you? Is she unmuted on your end? Ms. Bogan, if you can unmute yourself? Alright, I guess, let Mr. Chair know if she types anything. It doesn't sound like she can, we can hear her, I guess. So with that, perhaps she can type in the, in the box, but if we can hear her elsewhere, and at that time, but for now, I'll ask for ex parte disclosures from the commission. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Midi. Josu, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number 23-134AAR, the applicant is requesting architectural approval to install new wall sign for a property located at 11551 Southern Boulevard, number two. This slide illustrates the proposed wall sign. This slide illustrates the proposed materials and colors. Staff is recommending approval of application number 23-134AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sarah, does the applicant want to say anything, or? Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ms. Bogan. Okay, cool. Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions or comments? Commissioner Derry?
No.
Okay, I'd like to open the floor to public comment on this item. Anyone else online, Sarah? No? Okay. I'll close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move to approve application 23-1344AAR.
A motion made by Commissioner Williams. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And by Commissioner Derry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion cat passes five to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Bogan. Okay, we're moving on to item number six. Someone needs to leave us. Bye. This is a very lovely room. Just, I was just passing the time, since we had to wait for Mr. Fisher to call in. Okay. Application number 23-096SPM Cypress Key Town Center West Commercial Parcel. The applicant, Jay Morton, Planning and Landscape Architecture, is requesting major site plan modification approval in order to increase the outdoor seating square footage, update sidewalks, relocate the required art and public places, places piece, and modify the landscaping onsite for a property located at 11925 and 11931 Southern Boulevard. Midi, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just before I do this, wearing in, I'll just let the record reflect that Vice Chair McClellan also has a voting conflict on this item. She, her employer is the applicant, the agent for the applicant, I should say. So she left the dais at 7:22. She will not participate in or vote on this item. With that, is the applicant present here? If you could come to the podium and give your appearances and elsewhere, anybody who's going to speak on this item in?
Hi, I'm Kenzie Bullock with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture.
Thank you, ma'am. Could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you, and I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Midi. Josu, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number 23-096SPM, the applicant is requesting a major site plan modification approval in order to increase the outdoor seating square footage, update sidewalks, relocate the required art and public places piece, and modify the landscape onsite for a property located at 11925 and 11931 Southern Boulevard. On the site is located within the mixed-use development zoning district. Just a brief history on this, originally, a site plan and preliminary plan were approved through the adoption of Resolution Number 05-23 by the Village Council on May 19, 2005. Also, several subsequent site plan modifications took place from the original site plan. This slide illustrates the, the proposed site plan. The new 300-square-foot outdoor sitting dining area is highlighted in red, and the new location for the art and public places is highlighted in green on, on your screen. Access to the site exists and will remain from Southern Boulevard on the south and Crescent Boulevard on the west. This slide illustrates the proposed landscape plan with the affected areas highlighted. And with hearing this, this petition, village staff considered conformly with Chapter 26 of the Village Code of Ordinances, specifically, the proposed site meets the requirements for the mixed-use development zoning district as it pertains to parcel size with setbacks, purvis area, parking requirement, landscape areas, and maximum building height. And overall, the proposed site plan improvement meet all the village requirements for this type of use within the mixed-use development zoning district. Staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to Village Council regarding application number 23-096SPM and Resolution Number 23-44. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't catch you, Ms. Bow. Bullock, okay. Ms. Bullock, do you, do you have a presentation or anything you'd like to add? Okay. Okay, okay. Commissioners, any discussion or questions? You know, I'm looking forward to some new restaurants getting in there. That's nice, and they are being developed. Commissioner Leland, any questions?
That is a great idea.
Always good to see improvements.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to open the floor to public comment on this item. Anyone online? Ooh, okay. Okay, thank you, Alexa and Victoria. Ms. Bullock, you kinda wanna give us any information on that, please? Yes, come on up here.
And I guess, Mr. Chair, while she's coming forward, is there anybody else on any other public comment? So you can, if, if the chair would like to close public comment, then she can respond.
Sure. Thank you, Midi. I'll close the floor to public comment. Ms. Bullock?
Hi. So yes, there will be a wall. It's on the northern property line. It's on the site plan and the landscape plan. It will be a six-foot solid wall.
Yeah, thank you. That's it. I'll ask, commissioners, have any questions about?
No.
Okay. Okay, so do we have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we approve application number 23-096.
Motion made by Commissioner Leland. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Congratulations. Thank you. And we're gonna move on to app, item number seven, as Vice Chair McClellan joint, rejoins us up here. Application number 22-71SPM AAR CarMax, the applicant's Center Point Integrated Solutions LLC is requesting site plan modifications and architectural approval to construct a second phase of development on the site, which includes construction of the new second standalone building, which will be utilized for vehicle auction use for a property located 10501 Southern Boulevard. Midi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just for the record, Vice Chair McClellan is back on the dais at 7:28. Is the applicant present for the CarMax application? Good evening. Could you give your name for the record?
Nina Belinky.
Thank you. Could you raise your right hand for me, and I'll swear you in? Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you, ma'am, and I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Hey, Josu, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number 22-71SPM AAR, the applicant is requesting site plan modification and architectural approval to construct a second phase of development on the site, which includes construction of a new 4,216-square-foot standalone building, which will be utilized for vehicle auction use within the general commercial zoning district for a property located at 10501 Southern Boulevard. The applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the building architecture, colors, materials, and landscape plan. A quick history on this one. On May 17, 2018, Village Council approved Resolution Number 17-30 to permit two special exception uses and architectural approval for 6,846-square-foot new and used vehicle sales establishment within ancillary uses vehicle auction most recent. This application was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board and Village Council. I don't know if you guys remember the last time it came before you, it proceeded to council. However, Village Council recommended that the, on the applicant go back and work the application out with staff, because staff was recommending, then now at that time, we recommended some changes to the plans. The applicant went ahead and met with staff and provided us with updated plans. So on the next slide here, this is the, the proposed site plan, which reflect the changes discussed with the applicant. The new 4,216-square-foot standalone building is highlighted in red. The remaining area are identified as vehicle staging area. Access to the site will be provided from two full access points off of 105th Avenue North. In addition, there will be a cross-access connection with the shopping center to the east of the subject site. This is the proposed landscape plan. You could see the changes with this is that they're, they're, they strike the, the areas, the staging area, and they're providing lens, terminal islands. and they're providing lens, terminal islands for landscaping as previously requested by staff. This slide illustrate the proposed elevations. The applicant is also seeking architecture and approval for the building architectural color, materials and landscape plan. And with hearing this application, village staff considered conformly with chapter twenty-six of the village code ordinances, specifically the proposed project meets the requirements for general commercial zoning district as it pertains to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, purvis area, parking requirements, landscape areas and maximum building height. Overall, the proposed site plan improvement meet all the village requirements for this type of use within the general commercial zoning district. Staff recommends a, staff requests a recommendations of approval be submitted to the village council for application number twenty-two dash seven-one SPM AAR and resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-eight. This concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any question.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bulocky, do you have a presentation or anything you want to add?
I think we'll work out a fully available presentation because that was fairly detailed. So just to reiterate, couple of twenty public people were here a few months ago. All of the labor, labor, and just the terms of this commission and also the village council as well. And through the labor request to write forward client plan, we appreciate that. Yeah, so this is the next day in the plan, if we were to write a client plan to you today. So those landscape islands have been added. The striping has been added for the parking space, parking spaces within the staging area. And now we meet all code requirements. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, discussion questions? Commissioner Williams? So it was the the parking striping and the terminal islands, were the only two items, Josu, that they had to fix? Okay, perfect. Sorry.
Yes, they're added to the plan.
Okay.
Before you today.
Well, we appreciate you guys listening to us in the village council and coming on back and fixing everything. And thank you, staff, for working out with them. Commissioner Leland, any comments or questions?
I answered my question.
Commissioner Derry? Okay. I'd like to open the floor to public comment. No one's online, okay? I'll close, seeing no one, I'll close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion on this item?
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve item number two-two dash seven-one SPM AAR.
So motion made by Commissioner Williams, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair McClellan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, and thank you for working with us. Enjoy your evening. Okay, commission, great job today. Next order of business is just our next meeting. There's no meeting in December. Thank you. There is a meeting in January, Tuesday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Have motion to end the meeting. So moved to a seconded?
Seconded.
We're all good? Okay. And congratulations on our first meeting in the new village hall. So thanks, staff, and thanks, Midi and everyone. Awesome, great.